All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this August 4, 2025 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. We'll have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Barbara Baca.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Baca. I'm going to go ahead and start out this evening with a couple of statements on the closed meeting that we just stepped out of. So first off, I offer the following statement regarding the closed meeting held Monday, August 4, 2025 at 3:00 PM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on August 4, 2025 were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement and it will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And with that, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signaling the affirmative? Yes?
Aye.
All right, that passes 5-0. Next up, we have another closed meeting statement. I move that the county attorney be authorized to proceed with matters discussed for items three and four, and the contract attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in item two in the closed meeting held on Monday, August 4, within the parameters set by this commission during the closed meeting agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those wishing a vote in favor signaling the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes? And that passes on a 5-0 vote. That concludes our closed meeting business. And with that, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you very much. The following late add-on item is requested to be added to the agenda for consideration, and this is item 3A under the County Manager. For the 2025 Legislative Housing Appropriations to Burnaleo County be added to the agenda as item 7Q under approval of consent. The following items are requested to be deferred to a subsequent meeting. That is, item 7E Commissioners, County Planning Commission Appointment be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Item 7N Parks, Recreation and Open Space, Sandia Ranch Park Playground be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Additional changes for consideration by the commission. Item 11B Commissioners, Union Square Redevelopment be moved from introduction of resolutions to adoption of resolution as item 10B. This will also require the suspension of the rules for final adoption at introduction to allow staff to proceed in a timely manner with the procurement process and to meet the deadline in the noted resolution. Item 11A Accounting, this is the preliminary final quarter financial report year ending June 30, 2025, be moved from introduction of resolutions to adoption of resolutions as item 10C. This will also require a suspension of the rules for final adoption at introduction, and this is in order to meet a state deadline. A vote is required for the above changes to the agenda in addition to a vote for the suspension of the rules for items 11A and 11B. Thank you. And then on item 12C, under the County Manager, this is a motion to approve an agreed-upon compromise to replace the March 2023 Mental Health Corrections Action Plan to resolve disputes regarding compliance with the McLendon lawsuit. I'm requesting that this item come back to us for our first meeting in September.
All right, that was a lot of, a lot of changes. So we'll try to work through those here real quick. So if we could do, I would suggest two votes here. If we could do one vote for the deferrals and the other sort of regular order changes, and then we'll do another vote for the rule suspensions if there's no objection from any members. All right, not seeing any. So first off, I'd make a motion to grant the requests for the deferrals that were suggested by the County Manager.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signaling the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes? And that passes on a 5-0 vote. That concludes our closed meeting business. And with that, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you very much. The following late add-on item is requested to be added to the agenda for consideration, and this is item 3A under the County Manager. For the 2025 Legislative Housing Appropriations to Burnaleo County be added to the agenda as item 7Q under approval of consent. The following items are requested to be deferred to a subsequent meeting. That is, item 7E Commissioners, County Planning Commission Appointment be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Item 7N Parks, Recreation and Open Space, Sandia Ranch Park Playground be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Additional changes for consideration by the commission. Item 11B Commissioners, Union Square Redevelopment be moved from introduction of resolutions to adoption of resolution as item 10B. This will also require the suspension of the rules for final adoption at introduction to allow staff to proceed in a timely manner with the procurement process and to meet the deadline in the noted resolution. Item 11A Accounting, this is the preliminary final quarter financial report year ending June 30, 2025, be moved from introduction of resolutions to adoption of resolutions as item 10C. This will also require a suspension of the rules for final adoption at introduction, and this is in order to meet a state deadline. A vote is required for the above changes to the agenda in addition to a vote for the suspension of the rules for items 11A and 11B. Thank you. And then on item 12C, under the County Manager, this is a motion to approve an agreed-upon compromise to replace the March 2023 Mental Health Corrections Action Plan to resolve disputes regarding compliance with the McLendon lawsuit. I'm requesting that this item come back to us for our first meeting in September.
All right, that was a lot of, a lot of changes. So we'll try to work through those here real quick. So if we could do, I would suggest two votes here. If we could do one vote for the deferrals and the other sort of regular order changes, and then we'll do another vote for the rule suspensions if there's no objection from any members? All right, not seeing any. So first off, I'd make a motion to grant the requests for the deferrals that were suggested by the County Manager.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signaling the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes? And then opposed, that passes 5-0. All right, and then that leaves us, there were two rule suspensions requested. If there's no objection from any of the commissioners, I'd suggest we could vote on those with one motion. So those are two rule suspensions to move from introduction to allow immediate adoption of those resolutions. Make a motion. Motion from Commissioner Barbara Baca, I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signaling the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes? And that passes on a 5-0 vote. That concludes our closed meeting business. And with that, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you very much. The following late add-on item is requested to be added to the agenda for consideration, and this is item 3A under the County Manager. For the 2025 Legislative Housing Appropriations to Burnaleo County be added to the agenda as item 7Q under approval of consent. The following items are requested to be deferred to a subsequent meeting. That is, item 7E Commissioners, County Planning Commission Appointment be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Item 7N Parks, Recreation and Open Space, Sandia Ranch Park Playground be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Additional changes for consideration by the commission. Item 11B Commissioners, Union Square Redevelopment be moved from introduction of resolutions to adoption of resolution as item 10B. This will also require the suspension of the rules for final adoption at introduction to allow staff to proceed in a timely manner with the procurement process and to meet the deadline in the noted resolution. Item 11A Accounting, this is the preliminary final quarter financial report year ending June 30, 2025, be moved from introduction of resolutions to adoption of resolutions as item 10C. This will also require a suspension of the rules for final adoption at introduction, and this is in order to meet a state deadline. A vote is required for the above changes to the agenda in addition to a vote for the suspension of the rules for items 11A and 11B. Thank you. And then on item 12C, under the County Manager, this is a motion to approve an agreed-upon compromise to replace the March 2023 Mental Health Corrections Action Plan to resolve disputes regarding compliance with the McLendon lawsuit. I'm requesting that this item come back to us for our first meeting in September.
All right, that was a lot of, a lot of changes. So we'll try to work through those here real quick. So if we could do, I would suggest two votes here. If we could do one vote for the deferrals and the other sort of regular order changes, and then we'll do another vote for the rule suspensions if there's no objection from any members? All right, not seeing any. So first off, I'd make a motion to grant the requests for the deferrals that were suggested by the County Manager.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signaling the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes? And then opposed, that passes 5-0. All right, and then that leaves us, there were two rule suspensions requested. If there's no objection from any of the commissioners, I'd suggest we could vote on those with one motion. So those are two rule suspensions to move from introduction to allow immediate adoption of those resolutions. Make a motion. Motion from Commissioner Barbara Baca, I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signaling the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes. None opposed, that passes 5-0. All right, we have an agenda. Thank you, Madam County Manager, and, I'm sorry, I should have asked this before we did that. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the agenda that were not included? All right, seeing none. So that takes us on to item number four in our agenda, Proclamations. And we have Proclamation A Honoring the Lifesaving Efforts of the South Valley Aquatics Center Lifeguards presented by Commissioner Frank Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Here's my.
Okay, thank you so much. So I see everybody sort of approaching, and please come on up to the podium there.
So was I.
Thank you all for being here. It's my pleasure and honor to, to read this proclamation. I read about this in several different, to know the professionalism that we have in our staff and the, pleased to know the efforts that we've taken in this particular case. And so it's an honor and privilege to, to present this, to read this proclamation and present this to you. The Burnaleo County Board of County Commissioners, whereas on June 23, 2025, a team of lifeguards at the South Valley Aquatics Center took swift and decisive, decisive action that saved the life of a young swimmer who had become unresponsive in the pool. Whereas lifeguard Logan Sanchez immediately entered the water to recover the child, while pool manager Melanie Hernandez activated emergency protocols and led a coordinated response. And whereas headguards Edgar Pavia Garcia and Anthony Montoya and lifeguard Joshua Lovato, Jafet Beltran Larios performed three rounds of CPR and other lifesaving measures until the swimmer regained consciousness. And whereas the team's training, coordination, and composure under pressure exemplify, exemplify their highest standards of professionalism and reflect a combined service of one to seven years in the Burnaleo County Aquatics Program, many of these individuals are also pursuing careers in healthcare, emergency response, skilled trades, and community leadership. And whereas the actions of the entire team that day ensured a life was saved and demonstrate the critical importance of lifeguards in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes Sofia Martinez, Edgar Pavia Garcia, Jafet Beltran Larios, Melanie Hernandez, Anthony Montoya, Joshua Lovato, Ian Toledo, Lucas Toledo, Logan Sanchez, and Javier Olivares for their courage, integrity, and dedication to public service. They did this fourth day of August 2025. Congratulations to all of you. So I'd just like to say, as most of you being very young, and, and I think you set an example for other young people, other people your age of being proactive and action and professional. And so thanks again for all you do and your, your efforts are well noted, well acknowledged. And so I think the process is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have a proclamation to give to you that will be handed out to you, to each of you. And that at some point in time, if anybody, let me just say, is there somebody that wanted to make a comment? I don't know if there's anybody that wanted to speak on behalf of the group?
I am extremely thrilled to see these Burnaleo County lifeguards receive recognition for their lifesaving efforts on this day. From the outside, it could appear that lifeguards only sit on stand, blow their whistles, and shout walk a few times before rotating off duty to have a long air-conditioned break. The amount of training required to become a lifeguard, not to mention the several hours of training that follow, follow being hired, is something that many people are unaware of. Every month, these lifeguards continue to undergo at least four hours of training in various formats each month, including drills, online quizzes, skills practice, scenarios, and live audits. Our goal is for every patron who enters our facility to be able to exit just as safely, but we also train to prevent emergencies and to handle them when they do occur. We had the privilege to train with Burnco Fire and Rescue to participate in one of our pre-summer trainings this year. This allowed us to reenact circumstances in which lifeguards had to start CPR after extracting an unconscious drowning person. The CPR exercise was designed to simulate the typical time it takes for Burnco Fire and Rescue to reach a scene. Today, I believe it is reasonable to conclude that our lifeguards benefited much from that training. Lifeguarding requires constant education and training. It requires commitment, attention to detail, and perseverance. These characteristics are displayed by the lifeguards in Burnaleo County. Lastly, I would like to thank all of my staff members for their ongoing commitment to training, their ongoing efforts to make each of our swimming pools as safe as possible, and their overall commitment to Burnaleo County.
Getting your certificate, and I think I have.
...attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in item two in the closed meeting held on Monday, August 4th within the parameters set by this commission during the closed meeting agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? See none. All those wishing a vote in favor, signal in the affirmative.
Aye.
Yes? And that passes on a five-zero vote. That concludes our closed meeting business. And with that, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you very much. The following late add-on item is requested to be added to the agenda for consideration, and this is item three A under the county manager. For the 2025 Legislative Housing Appropriations to Burnaleo County be added to the agenda as item seven Q under approval of consent. The following items are requested to be deferred to a subsequent meeting. That is, item seven E, Commissioners, County Planning Commission appointment be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Item seven N, Parks, Recreation and Open Space, Sandia Ranch Park Playground be deferred to a subsequent meeting. Additional changes for consideration by the commission. Item eleven B, Commissioners, Union Square Redevelopment be moved from introduction of resolutions to adoption of resolution as item ten B. This will also require the suspension of the rules for final adoption at introduction to allow staff to proceed in a timely manner with the procurement process and to meet the deadline in the noted resolution. Item eleven A, Accounting, this is the preliminary final quarter financial report year ending June 30th, 2025, be moved from introduction of resolutions to adoption of resolutions as item ten C. This will also require a suspension of the rules for final adoption at introduction, and this is in order to meet a state deadline. A vote is required for the above changes to the agenda in addition to a vote for the suspension of the rules for items eleven A and eleven B. Thank you. And then on item twelve C, under the county manager, this is a motion to approve an agreed-upon compromise to replace the March 2023 Mental Health Corrections Action Plan to resolve disputes regarding compliance with the McLendon lawsuit. I'm requesting that this item come back to us for our first meeting in September.
All right. That was a lot of, a lot of changes, so we'll try to work through those here real quick. So if we could do, I would suggest two votes here. If we could do one vote for the deferrals and the other sort of regular order changes, and then we'll do another vote for the rule suspensions. If there's no objection from any members? All right, not seeing any. So first off, I'd make a motion to grant the requests for the deferrals that were suggested by the county manager.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative?
Yes.
Yes. And then opposed, that passes five-zero. All right. And then that leaves us, there were two rule suspensions requested. If there's no objection from any of the commissioners, I'd suggest we could vote on those with one motion. So there are two rule suspensions to move from introduction to allow immediate adoption of those resolutions.
Make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Barbara Baca, I'll second. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes. None opposed, that passes five-zero. All right, we have an agenda. Thank you, Madam County Manager, and, sorry, I should have asked this before we did that. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the agenda that were not included? All right, see none. So that takes us on to item number four in our agenda, Proclamations. And we have proclamation A, honoring the lifesaving efforts of the South Valley Aquatics Center lifeguards presented by Commissioner Frank Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Here's Mike.
Okay, thank you so much. So I see everybody sort of approaching, and please come on up to the podium there. Thank you all for being here. It's my pleasure and honor to, to read this proclamation. I read about this and several to know the professionalism that we have in our staff and the, pleased to know the efforts that we've taken in this particular case, and so it's an honor and privilege to, to present this, to read this proclamation and present this to you. The Burnaleo County Board of County Commissioners, whereas on June 23rd, 2025, a team of lifeguards at the South Valley Aquatics Center took swift and decisive, decisive action that saved the life of a young swimmer who had become unresponsive in the pool. Whereas lifeguard Logan Sanchez immediately entered the water to recover the child, while pool manager Melanie Hernandez activated emergency protocols and led a coordinated response. And whereas headguards Edgar Pavia Garcia and Anthony Montoya, and lifeguard Joshua Lovato, Jafet Beltran Larios performed three rounds of CPR and other lifesaving measures until the swimmer regained consciousness. And whereas the team's training, coordination, and composure under pressure exemplify, exemplify their highest standards of professionalism and reflect a combined service of one to seven years in the Burnaleo County Aquatics Program, many of these individuals are also pursuing careers in healthcare, emergency response, skilled trades, and community leadership. And whereas the actions of the entire team that day ensured a life was saved and demonstrate the critical importance of lifeguards in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes Sofia Martinez, Edgar Pavia Garcia, Jafet Beltran Larios, Melanie Hernandez, Anthony Montoya, Joshua Lovato, Ian Toledo, Lucas Toledo, Logan Sanchez, and Javier Olivares for their courage, integrity, and dedication to public service. They did this fourth day of August, 2025. So I'd just like to say, as most of you being very young, and, and I think you set an example for other young people, other people your age of being proactive and action and professional. And so thanks again for all you do and your, your efforts are well noted, well acknowledged. And so I think the process is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have a proclamation to give to you that will be handed out to you, to each of you. And that at some point in time, if anybody, let me just say, is there somebody that wanted to make a comment? I don't know if there's anybody that wanted to speak on behalf of the group.
I am extremely thrilled to see these Burnaleo County lifeguards receive recognition for their lifesaving efforts on this day. From the outside, it could appear that lifeguards only sit on stand, blow their whistles, and shout walk a few times before rotating off duty to have a long air-conditioned break. The amount of training required to become a lifeguard, not to mention the several hours of training that follow, follow being hired, is something that many people are unaware of. Every month, these lifeguards continue to undergo at least four hours of training in various formats each month, including drills, online quizzes, skills practice, scenarios, and live audits. Our goal is for every patron who enters our facility to be able to exit just as safely, but we also train to prevent emergencies and to handle them when they do occur. We had the privilege to train with Burnco Fire and Rescue to participate in one of our pre-summer trainings this year. This allowed us to reenact circumstances in which lifeguards had to start CPR after extracting an unconscious drowning person. The CPR exercise was designed to simulate the typical time it takes for Burnco Fire and Rescue to reach a scene. Today, I believe it is reasonable to conclude that our lifeguards benefited much from that training. Lifeguarding requires constant education and training. It requires commitment, attention to detail, and perseverance. These characteristics are displayed by the lifeguards in Burnaleo County. Lastly, I would like to thank all of my staff members for their ongoing commitment to training, their ongoing efforts to make each of our swimming pools as safe as possible, and their overall commitment to Burnaleo County.
Getting your certificate? And I think I have.
First of all. Thank you very much, Commissioner Baca, for honoring those heroic actions. Next up, we have on our certificates and awards, sponsored by Commission Vice Chair Barbowa, the Summer of Nonviolence, and the Gen P Intern Recognition Presentation.
Thank you, Chair, and fellow commissioners. I am so excited. We are being the example of how beautiful and brilliant our young people are when given the opportunity. Today is the second acknowledgement of how great our young people can be. So we have both, I'm excited to share, the city and county have been partnering on Summer of Nonviolence and been giving our, because we know when we provide our young people and families opportunities to do good, fun, meaningful things in the community, that that means that they're not out there doing things that we wouldn't want them to do. And that's, so these five individuals, Langla Shamar, have been, really been the, are what we call, we called our Gen P ambassadors. So I'm going to read the acknowledgement, and then we also have a little bit of a video to share, and then we'll hear from our, from our Gen P, which I just want to start by saying, they picked the name for themselves. They call themselves Gen P for Generation Peace. What great models we have right here. So acknowledgement. Generation Peace. Generation Peace, also known as Gen P, proudly served as the inaugural team of teen ambassadors for the Summer of Nonviolence, an initiative led by Burnaleo County, the Albuquerque Community Safety Department, and the City of Albuquerque to provide safe, positive, and enriching opportunities for youth during the summer months. The Gen P team is comprised of Shayla Apadaka, a junior at Albuquerque High School, Itzel Izzy Fernandez, a senior at West Mesa High School, Pernav Joshi, a senior at La Cueva High School, Jada High Porter, a 2025 graduate of Eldorado High School, and Jalen Valdez, a senior at VSU Cleveland High School in Rio de Janeiro. Over the past three months, these young leaders have demonstrated unwavering commitment to promoting peace and public safety through youth engagement and events, including drive-in movies, teen dances, and athletic activities. Their efforts helped create spaces that fostered learning and connection, engaging thousands of youth, young adults, and families across Burnaleo County to take the pledge of nonviolence. The Gen P team amplified the reach of the Summer of Nonviolence through television and radio appearances, on social media campaigns, and in-person leadership at community events. The Gen P ambassadors exemplified the principles of the pledge: respect for myself and others, communicate honestly, listen carefully, forgive and apologize, respect nature, play creatively, be courageous, and ask for help, acknowledging that everyone needs support and guidance. Gen P ambassadors' contributions have left a lasting legacy. As the first youth to take on this role and responsibility, they set a powerful example of leadership, advocacy, and service. With great pride and sincere appreciation, the whole Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners formally honors and thanks the Burnaleo County 2025 Generation Peace ambassadors for their outstanding dedication to peace and safety in our communities. Thank you so much. And we all know that I could talk and talk forever, but instead, we're going to show you an amazing video. This summer, the new generation leaders stepped up. This Gen P also were our 2025 ambassadors, and they brought the energy, empathy, and purpose to the Summer of Nonviolence. So let's take a look. Wherever there's a Summer of Nonviolence event, there's a commitment to peace and inclusion. Summer of Nonviolence is an act where we all actively collaborate through summer, through one act of kindness, one conversation, and just starts off with one person.
Its positive influence to end violence, to bond our families and our cultures, and to prevent indifference amongst our communities, means so much to me, and I'm so grateful to share it with all of you this summer.
Estoy muy emocionada de tener la oportunidad de participar en el programa de verano de sin violencia. Podemos ayudar e interactuar con los jóvenes y seguir siendo modelos para los jóvenes y nuestra comunidad.
I'm super excited to be a part of an initiative that I believe can truly bring the community together to create positive change.
Right now, we know that about 60% of all violence over the summer is caused by youth in our community. So obviously, we need to do everything that we can to lower this statistic. Part of the Summer of Nonviolence includes a pledge. The pledge is essentially a vow to keep yourself and others around you away from violence. Get ready for a night you'll never forget.
We're bringing the heat to Miami to Albuquerque Convention Center in Ballroom A.
It's all happening August 2nd from 7:30 to 10:30 p.m.
Think palm trees, music, dancing, and Miami vibes, all night long.
Grab your friends and come party with us at a night in Miami.
Are you looking for a perfect summer night under the 505 Stars?
Then join us for our last drive-in movie event on July 30th.
We'll be showing Twilight in the east lot of the Balloon Fiesta Park.
Gates open at 6:30, so come early and make sure to get some free food before the movie starts at 8.
Don't miss this free event. I come chill with Gen P. This event is part of the Summer of Nonviolence Initiative from the City of Albuquerque's Community Safety Department and Burnaleo County, promoting a summer filled with positivity, connection, and good vibes.
Thank you so much. What an amazing way. And now we'll hear from one of the Gen P ambassadors.
Good evening, Commissioner Cheryl Levas and members of the commission. My name is Jada Hay Porter, and I am a graduate of Eldorado High School. I have had the honor of being a member of Gen P, also known as Generation Peace, throughout this year's Summer of Nonviolence Initiative. We'd like to thank our partners, Burnaleo County, the City of Albuquerque, and Albuquerque Community Safety. We all have learned so much valuable knowledge and gained so many new experiences that we will take with us for the rest of our lives.
Hello, my name is Jalen Valdez from VSU Cleveland High School. This internship has provided us with the opportunity to be in a professional environment in which we were able to develop a set of skills such as business etiquette, problem-solving, and a leadership perspective. This internship has allowed us to use our voices to advocate for a safer community.
Hello, my name is Shayla Apadaka from Albuquerque High School. This summer, we had the privilege to interact with community through our free events, and it has bring the meaningful, positive impact on all of us. It has allowed us to be leaders amongst others, have compassion, and be helpful with those in need.
Hello. Hello, my name is Pernav Joshi. I'm currently a senior at La Cueva High School, and I just want to give a quick shout-out to the people who have mentored us during our time here working under Burnaleo County in Summer of Nonviolence. First, I want to give a shout-out to our amazing boss, Shamar Valdez. Without her help, this program would generally be unsuccessful because she's taught us so many invaluable skills such as communication and public speaking. And next, I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Lisa White, who established the Summer of Nonviolence program, and we thank her and all of her efforts in helping the community.
Hola, me llamo Izzy y soy de West Mesa High School. Nos gustaría agradecer personalmente al comisionado Barbowa y comisionado Frank Baca por su apoyo y contribución financiera a nuestra iniciativa de verano sin violencia.
We all cannot wait to see how this initiative will continue to flourish. Thank you. Gen P out.
Thank you so much. Thanks for, Chair, for the ability to recognize. And what perfect ambassadors you all have been for this very first inaugural year, and we're so excited. Oh, this is for me. I love it. Yes, please come up for a picture. And we have these. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Y'all did it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And Shamar, can you hand these to them? And I have a picture, so. Yes, come up, Lisa. This is our feature.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair, and just what amazing things happening in our community this summer, and young people leading the way, and just a wonderful way to start the meeting. I really, really appreciate the recognition.
Thank you, and I just want, one last tiny note in that so many events happen, and I'm sure we'll soon have a list of all the numbers, but of the, there's thousands of young, and like the drive-in movies, this last one that they had, over 2,000, mostly young adults and young people. 2,000, gave them an opportunity for something, so I'm moved. Thank you.
All right. Item B, we have the South Valley Economic Development Center recognition, presented and sponsored by Commissioner Frank Baca.
Thank you. I guess you would all like to stand, and you're welcome to stand when placed or come Thank you all for being here tonight. As, as you all know, the standard, I have some particular interest in this organization and great pride in it, having been involved in the founding of the Rio Grande Community Development Corporation some over 30 years ago. And you have, as I've said many times, so far surpassed the expectations that I had when we started this organization over 30 years ago. And when I drive by your office and sit down and look at that big, beautiful building and know the great, beautiful work that's going on there, it just gives me a great sense of pride. So it's an honor, a pleasure to be able to present this proclamation and to, to read it. For commemorating the 20th anniversary of the South Valley Economic Development Center and honoring its legacy of community impact. Acknowledging the South Valley Economic Development Center, SVEDC, a program of the Rio Grande Community Development Corporation in partnership with Burnaleo County, was established in 2005 as a visionary public-private partnership to promote equitable economic development in the South Valley. I'm just going to interject to, to clarify for everybody that the SVDC is a project of the RG CDC, and that's the difference in terms of the, the dates there. This started in 2005, and I had nothing to do with that, I will say. So I was not on the board, had nothing to do with that part of it. Acknowledging the Rio Grande Community Development Corporation has served as a cornerstone of community development and economic empowerment for over 40 years, supporting underserved entrepreneurs, increasing local food production, and fostering self-sufficiency through innovation, train, and enterprise. And acknowledging the SVDC is one of only seven certified business incubators in New Mexico and has supported more than 200 businesses through its incubation programs, micro lending, and technical assistance. Its clients and supported businesses generate millions of dollars in economic activity, contributing to the local economy. And acknowledging the SVEDC continues to serve as a model for community-led development, having expanded its facility to include a first-of-its-kind agriculture facility that will further enhance local food systems, increase processing capacity, and create new pathways for economic opportunity. And acknowledging the 20th anniversary celebration commemorates the groundbreaking of this new facility, symbolizing the next chapter in the SVEDC's legacy. This milestone also honors the visionary founding members, community leaders, entrepreneurs, and partners who have made the SVEDC work possible. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the 20th anniversary of the South Valley Economic Development Center and commend its continued leadership in advancing equitable economic development for the people of Burnaleo County, done this fourth day of August, 2025, in Burnaleo County Stadium, Mexico. Congratulations.
Javier Rojo, our executive director, I would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Commissioner Baca, for the proclamation and for the opportunity to speak. My name is Javier Rojo, and I'm the executive director of the Rio Grande Community Development Corporation. First things first, I want to take some time to thank my staff and board and the previous executive director. You guys keep the doors open, you make the magic happen. Thank you, guys. So the Rio Grande Community Development Corporation was founded in 1987, before I was born. And it was founded under two guiding principles. First, that economic development and community development go hand in hand. You can't have one without the other. If folks aren't having their basic necessities met, how can you ask them to start creating businesses? That's why one of the first campaigns the organization was involved in was a water rights campaign, to hook up homes in the South Valley to the local sewage system. Number two, the organization is meant to serve as a vehicle for private and public investment. And the best example of that is the South Valley Economic Development Center. And the way that was created, it, they surveyed their community, and they asked them, what do you need to generate community wealth? And people answered, food, because this food is something that is, relates to our culture, everybody can sort of relate to it. So they created the first commercial kitchen, the largest commercial kitchen in the state. And at the same time, it was one of seven certified business incubators in the state of New Mexico. And since its inception, the SVDC has advised hundreds of businesses. We currently are incubated over 30 businesses. Our clients create jobs, they generate millions of dollars in sales, and they pay taxes. And they do so by leveraging our cultural heritage and traditions. That's real, genuine economic development. I'll end with this. One important thing this job has taught me is that to do big things, like the South Valley Economic Development Center, it takes time. The RG CDC was founded in 1987. The SVDC was built in 2005. That's almost 20 years. And it also takes committed people. The original founders of the organization, a lot, some of them are, are no longer here, they passed away. So the people that were involved in this, they understood that they might not ever see the fruits of their labor. So it takes, much like it takes a child, much like it takes a community to raise a child, it also takes a community to raise a community development center. And I am honored to continue that tradition and continue that work, and that's, that's all I have.
We have a proclamation, I would like to hand you, and I'd like you to come forward,
Commissioner Baca, I just want to thank you for, for that, and I've talked to Director Gonzalez many times about the Economic Development Center there, but never understood the, the mission behind it, and of course, the, the wonderful people behind it, and I really appreciate you highlighting that, and it's incredible work that's going on in our community. our community. Thank you. All right, next up, we have a public comment before communications, so each person will have two minutes and you'll be alerted to your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium, and if you are, if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. In order to maintain decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Javier, could you please call the names this evening?
Thank you Chair, tonight we have one public speaker, the name Deborah Potter.
Dr. Deborah Potter, good evening Chairman Olivas, I want to thank the county commissioners who voted to bring the resolution defending our U.S. Constitution and the separation of powers forward for adoption today. Answering the local community's urgent call to action is an act of patriotism and a tribute to your solemn oath of office to uphold our U.S. Constitution. This resolution condemns the unconstitutional executive orders, other illegal actions, and willful misdeeds of the executive branch of the U.S. Government and the corresponding harms to our local community. It officially documents the abuses being inflicted upon us at this time. My concerns as a PhD scientist include impacts to public health due to the weakening of federal environmental regulations, the abandonment of our nation's international commitments to address the climate crisis that endangers our life support system, and the unprecedented attack on academic freedom in our country. I also condemn the anti-science actions and disinformation from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, especially regarding vaccines. You also heard supporting testimony from two United States Marine Corps veterans invoking their lifetime oath of office to defend the Constitution, and from a recent graduate of UNM School of Law concerned about the erosion of constitutional norms. In response, members of the commission validated our concerns and provided resolutions for them. Together, we have honored our responsibility, our shared responsibility, to defend our Constitution, our rights, and the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you very much Ms. Potter. All right, that concludes public comment for the evening. Thank you Javier, and so up next, we've got item A, our Behavioral Health Authority Division will be presenting the ATAB FY25 Annual Report. Dr. Lindstrom will be starting us off.
Thank you Mr. Chair and members of the commission. The Addiction Treatment Advisory Board is one of our Division's five advisory boards, and I have with me tonight two co-chairs who have served in this role for the last three years, and they are about to hand the reins over to new leadership, so I have Dr. Stern and Dr. McCready, who will be doing the annual report presentation. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Olivas and Commissioners, I would, you have met me and Dr. McCready in these last three years, but I would like to present to you our new Chair, Dr. William Campbell, and our Vice Chair, Ashley Charzak. So they will be presenting to you hopefully next year. Can we go to the slide? Ah, right there for me.
Just press that arrow.
Just the arrow, okay, thank you so much. I want to first start off by going over the why the ATAB Board was formed, it was formed in 2017 as an advisory body staffed with medical professionals and addiction specialists that would make policy recommendations to help align the county's programming and methods used for delivery service related to addiction treatment and harm reduction services. So again, we are now in our eighth year, we are, the board is composed of 15 members representing a range of concerns. ATAB is extremely pleased to be working with Dr. Lindstrom, who has a deep base of experience and scientific knowledge about the challenges faced by individuals with substance use disorder, as well as a deep understanding of organizational systems and the partnership between ATAB and Dr. Lindstrom has been protective, productive, and seamless. Our accomplishments over the last year are focused on creating the adolescent detoxification services, which resulted in new services at Serenity Mesa and Presbyterian Hospital. We have also provided input to the opioid settlement fund plans, we have stayed informed and provided input about MDC and the care campus, we are working on expanding the standards of care, discussed harm reduction approaches, and wanted to work on considering alcohol treatment needs and gaps. We also wrote a letter to the Governor and Attorney General, which was approved by the Board to address the issues of inadequate buprenorphine supplies in many of the pharmacies when people have gotten, come in for treatment and have a prescription and then can't get their medications. I've already introduced our new Chair. We want to continue working on treatment resources for people who struggle with substance use disorder, who are pregnant, postpartum, or caring for young children. We know that resources for the unhoused and precarious, precariously housed persons with substance use disorder are insubstantial, I guess, and so want to continue pushing for more resources for them. We feel it is important to also work on integrated services for persons with dual mental health and substance use disorders. This is a big problem and some, some, you know, some people want, only want to deal with one or the other separately when really they're best served by integrating those services. And continue with community education around harm reduction principles and practices. And I'm gonna let Dr. McCready discuss our recommendations.
Chairman Olivas, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. We have some additional plans for the next year, which will be carried out by our wonderful new Chair and Vice Chair. First, we, we are looking for new members for ATAB based on our revised membership that you approved, so we are looking for members, anyone who's listening is interested, we're happy to have you get in touch with us. We are working more on the standards of care for substance use disorder and we are kind of rethinking how we're going to be doing that, I'm not going to go into the details now. We are very concerned still about issues related to inmates with substance use disorders at the MDC, as you know, there continue to be deaths there. There are also a lot of issues around maintaining continuity of care as inmates are released from the MDC into the community to continue their treatment. And we're also very concerned about, as I said, issues related to inmate deaths specifically during the detoxification process. We have been talking about harm reduction strategies and we want to develop a specific policy recommendation that we'll be bringing forth to the county. We also want to examine why health outcomes are worse for women, and to examine ways to bridge that gap to improve women's health outcomes related to substance use disorder. And finally, closest to my heart probably, are developing recommendations to really increase public awareness about hazardous alcohol use and examine alcohol treatment models and needs. And with that, I also just want to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to serve as the Vice Chair and look forward to continuing to serve on ATAB in the next few years. Thank you. And we now stand for questions.
Thank you very much Commissioners, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you Chair, well, I think I knew but maybe didn't know, so I'm a little bit, ah, but yay, welcome to new leadership, and I'm glad to hear that Dr., at least Dr. McCready's still gonna be involved even if not in services, Chair, Vice Chair, and I hope Dr. Stern is too. I just want to take the moment to say, Dr. Stern and Dr. McCready, thank you for your service, I think you all have done the work through the hard times and through pandemics, and you guys already do the work in service at the places you serve for your regular jobs, and this is just your volunteer opportunity. And Dr. Stern has done, served on the boards where we hire, the hiring board for the new medical director, has been the, I mean, y'all have just done so much in your service, both Dr. Stern, Dr. McCready, so I don't, I wish I would have known and I would have put a big statement about how amazing y'all's service are. And to Dr. Campbell and Ashley, I don't want to get Charzak, thank you so much, I've seen you all, thank you for stepping into this leadership, it is so important, and this board has served the county in so many ways and continues to be a great place for us to run to when we need the, that help and team of people, so I just, I'm so very excited to hear about new leadership, although I'm really sad that, that old leadership is going away, but yes, I, I appreciate the board in whole, I love, thank you Ashley for always bringing the harm reduction comments, it makes me very excited about the future of this board and ATAB, so just thank you to all so much. I did have a couple of questions about the recommendations, just to, oh, I wrote the wrong ones down, so when the, well, I guess I did want to, I know, so part of Dr. Stern and Dr. McCready are, have been or are part of, also part of the UNM hospital systems, so that gives us a big advantage, and they'll still be on the board, we see, right, I was worried that they were leaving all the way.
We will still be on the board.
Okay.
I am not a part of the UNM system.
And neither am I.
No, no you're not?
I was the main, I've, I've, I've been faculty on the main campus of UNM.
Okay.
Not, not, not Health Science.
I've been faculty of the main campus of the Center on Alcohol, Substance Use and Addictions, known as CASA, but that's not affiliated with the hospital.
Okay, well, thank you, I was just gonna say, they know the systems well, and having them and being a part and understand the systems, I think are just so important. I also just want to welcome both of you to reach out if there's other folks, I think within, just who do you need to know within the county, between, there's so much between fire, any of our folks that you might need to be able to do the best work you can, I'd love to help connect or whatever we can do, thank you for your service. On the question for the, the postpartum, right now I know that UNM runs the Milagro Program, we have at our CARES campus, the whole facility that's meant to serve folks that are pregnant or postpartum with addiction, or hopefully, you know, in, working on their recovery. What has been ATAB's, when this recommendation comes up, just makes me think of, what's the piece that we need to focus in on with that population if we have these opportunities?
There has been progress with women who are postpartum and with children at the care campus in the SAC program, that hadn't worked well for a while and it is working better, but I still think that longer-term transitional housing, supportive housing would be the next need.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a couple other comments, Loveless Hospital also has the Grace Program, which works with pregnant and postpartum women, one of the members of ATAB, Kelly Washer, is the Director of that program, but we have a lot of women who are substance use, have substance use issues, who are not involved with any of those programs, and so I think we need more expansion of services that are, that go into the community. And we also have started to discuss concerns, which we'll be continuing to look at, around the Governor's Order, which says that any, you know, child who's born with substances in their system will be immediately become under the care of CYFD, and we, we have a lot of concerns about the issues both for mothers who might then avoid care, avoid prenatal care, deliver at home, that kind of thing, so, so there's a bigger system of, of issues, I think, that, that have been exacerbated by the, the Governor's Order, which I think was very heartfelt and, you know, focused on the concerns of the, the welfare of the child, of the baby, but we just don't have enough services and we probably don't have enough range of services.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, I think, I, I have some other questions that I think I'll just follow up with you on about the report, but I really appreciate the report and hearing from you, so thank you all, again, thank you Chair.
Thank you Vice Chair, I just wanted to thank you all for your service on, on this board, I, I particularly remember when we were working on our Behavioral Health Authority ordinance and the, the much generous input of your time and your, your experience in the field that, that you gave us and, and lent to the county and continue to do so, and just want to appreciate you for that and for the new leadership stepping up, looking forward to working with you, and, and I always like seeing these reports and, and you all are on the cutting edge of, of mental health and substance use and all of the emerging issues that are, that we're tackling, and glad you're here with us, thank you.
Thank you, we really appreciate the, the county and the county commissioners and the focus that they have made for working on behavioral health, it's so important, and particularly, you know, the focus that we've been able to give around substance use disorders, so we really appreciate the collaboration and the effort that you've made to make this a priority.
Thank you very much. All right, up next, we have finance item from the University of New Mexico Hospital Report for their fourth quarter fiscal year 2025, presented by UNM Hospital CEO Kate Becker.
Good evening Commissioners, thanks so much for the time this evening, we haven't quite closed fiscal year 25, the fourth quarter fiscal year 25 ended June 30th, so your report contains results through May. Through May, you will see the hospital is operating at a $32 million negative loss, that's about a 2% negative position, and you may remember in April, we had taken a number of actions to start to improve our financial performance, so in June, we did start to see some of that impact, we expect to see most of that impact starting July 1 in the new fiscal year, because we had a lot of positions that were changed during that April transition time. So we did have a positive margin for the month of June, and we will end the year at just about a $30 million loss, but we're in a much better position starting July 1 and going forward. And I would also mention a couple of other things, as you know, we're looking at the new One Big Beautiful Bill Act and the results that have come out regarding changes to Medicaid with that bill, that will significantly impact our UNM care program, and that will start to show up in our fiscal year 27, so as we go into budgeting this year, we do expect to see, and the state is estimating 89,000 to 90,000 New Mexicans rolling off of Medicaid December 31 of '26, that's halfway through our next fiscal year. Looking back at, before the Affordable Care Act was expanded, today, we have on average about 5,000 people enrolled in UNM care, that is our program for uncompensated care. Prior to the ACA, that number was between 25 and 30,000, so we are expecting that number to go back up four to five times what the current number is, so as we look into our budget for next year, we've done some work on kind of right sizing and getting operationally, you know, in a good position, we're gonna have to do some more work this coming year to figure out how that impact is gonna play out. On a positive note, we do have the new Critical Care Tower opening October 5th, first patient 5:00 AM on Sunday, October 5th, and we have a ribbon cutting for that on September 26th at 11:00 AM, you should all have received, saved the dates for that, we would love to see you there. That will help us from a couple of perspectives, the first one is, it's additional beds in the community, additional revenue for the hospital, and it's really in that critical care space, which is some of the ones and only services that UNMH provides, so we're looking forward to that, it's very positive. I also do want to say thank you to the ATAB folks, I don't know if they're still here, for their work with us at MDC, they have been very supportive and very engaged, especially as we work with the community on transitions for folks who are medication-assisted treatment at the jail, for continuity of care into the community. So with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you very much Ms. Becker, Commissioners, questions? Madam Vice Chair, I know you have, you have to have a question. Madam Vice Chair, I know you have, you have to have a question. I'll put you on the spot, but.
No, I do. Thank you, Chair. You know me too well. I, um, I just, well, I think some of this is probably like the, on page, well, it says packet, page 45 of the report, um, it talks about our, um, MB, MBDC inmates receiving hospital services. And, um, I guess I expect so like the, maybe the final month, June of 2025 reflects more inpatient and outpatient. What does this mean exactly? If you don't mind sharing with me?
Yeah, it'll take me just a second to find the page because it's not the same pages.
It's 16 at the top.
Oh, thanks.
Green 16.
That's very helpful. Um, so one of the things that we've seen is, um, over the last year, really, from probably October 24, when you see that number start to go up until now, um, we've changed in October 24 how we did that counting. So we began counting it by total number of inmates rather than by appointments. So it changed the report. So we probably shouldn't be doing those as a continuum. We should be doing them more as a, um, sta, starting over with October 24 as a new series because you can't really tell. So it's, uh, measuring now how many inmates actually have outpatient appointments.
And then the inpatient is in the uni, at the hospital or at MDC, I guess it's?
Inpatient is folks who were transferred to the hospital for inpatient care.
From in, MDC, okay, okay. Because we do have services at MDC, but those aren't reflected here then?
No, these would be, um, both inpatient services and primarily specialty clinic appointments because a lot of the services that we provide at MDC are more primary care or chronic care services. We have worked on increasing the number of specialty visits that are available, especially for things like cardiology and OB and GYN. Um, so continuing to build those services and then build telehealth capacity for those as well.
And, and so that reflects on that same page, that's the outpatient is the specialty? I guess I'm just not understanding what outpatient is.
Outpatient is folks who are transferred from the jail to the clinics at UNMH for specialty care, but they're not admitted to the hospital, they're making clinic visits.
Okay, got it, got it. Thank you. Not so hard. And on just the next, very next page, 17, you talked about the, um, CARES, which is the charity care, Bernabeu County. I think we talked before, you actually mentioned the piece about the charity name, but anyways, the care. Um, and so that, I think we had talked before about, um, how is the, um, hospital make that? When you said 5,000, that's about 5,000 patients that are on the care. This 31,000 is how many times they've used care?
Correct. The encounters is the number on page 17. And then on page 31 is actually the number of people who are enrolled in UNM care.
Oh, great, great. Um, okay. And, and we expect that number to go up and that number, um, the money that has been received. So pre-ACA, you're saying that was about 25,000 people that were being served. Then ACA went down to 5,000. That's great. So it was supposed to work. Now we're anticipating going back up, but there, the funding source was still the same from before, from pre-ACA?
Yeah, Commissioner Barbo, there is no funding source for that patient population.
Okay, that's, and that is, okay, so that's part of the mill levy or whatever.
Um, and, um, Commissioner Barbo, the mill levy is supporting operations and maintenance of the hospital. It does not support indigent care. Other counties do have a hospital funding act that supports indigent care.
And the, because every time the legislature talks about how they've covered indigent care period at the hospitals, that's not what's happening.
So for UNM Hospital, our hospital funding act is different. And the wording of our hospital funding act specifically directs that funding to operations and maintenance of the hospital. So on page seven, um, we have the mill levy distribution for operations and maintenance. And then back in 2016, we allocated 15% of the mill levy to behavioral health services. And so that's also reported in this report.
But, and so just so I'm understanding, how does, there is no, there is no funding source for indigent care at UNMH?
Correct. So the way indigent care is paid for at UNMH, like it is at other hospitals that are not county hospitals, is by the revenue that the hospital generates for all of its services. And then that is what covers the care that is not paid for.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I think that's it.
Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
CEO Becker. Item number seven, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for item 7G and ordinance numbers for 7O and 7P?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 7G is AR 2025 dash 79. 7O is ordinance 2025 dash 22. 7P is ordinance 2025 dash 23.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public and resolutions have been introduced at previous meetings. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, uh, signal in the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes? Any opposed? That passes on a 5-0 vote. All right, there were no withdrawals from the consent agenda this evenings, evening. So that takes us to item number nine, our adoption of ordinance and amendment to the county code. Madam Clerk, could you please provide an ordinance number for item 9D?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 9D is ordinance 2025 dash 24.
24, thank you. All right, first up tonight, item A, Economic Development, introduction of the amendment to the ordinance for Casitas del Camino project revenue bond. We have our Director Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Uh, good evening, Commissioner, and thank you for the time today. Uh, so this, uh, first item is for Casitas del Camino. So the commission has already approved the IR, the project revenue bond ordinance for this housing project, but there is a delay with their financing with HUD. So they're gonna need to extend out their ordinance in order to complete that. And they plan to close on the project in December of 2025. So this action would only allow for an additional, um, 180 days. But a project revenue bond, for those listening at home, is a tool that we use to fund multifamily housing projects that is done in conjunction with low income housing tax credits and provides lower costs to the project to be able to, uh, actually complete the project. And they get low income housing tax credits through Housing New Mexico and volume cap from the State Board of Finance. Once again, this is for an 88-unit housing development on the west side. We'll be refurbishing 42 units and building an additional 46 units and a total of 544, 541 folks would end up being housed. Once again, be able to rehab the units and develop new units. And, uh, this, uh, is for, again, for a term of 30 years. And, uh, they've also been, already been approved for volume cap from the state and they're from their tax credits as well. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Director. Any questions, Commissioners? Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second. So we have a motion from Commissioner Barbara Baca, a second from the Chair. Any further discussion on the ordinance amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative?
Aye.
Aye.
And seeing none opposed, that passes 5-0. And we'll go on to our next item, also economic development, the introduction for amendment to the Bernabeu County Affordable Housing Ordinance, also presented by Director Gonzalez.
Right, thank you. Um, so this is our, uh, the county's housing ordinance, um, that we created in 2015. Our, the existing language requires that the passage of every project that we do have an additional ordinance. And we're proposing to amend that to allow the commission to act more swiftly for housing projects, to be able to approve, like we did at the last meeting, a project application um, that would ultimately then be approved by the Mortgage Finance Authority or Housing New Mexico and allows the county to move more swiftly. So next steps, if you adopt this, um, ordinance, uh, amendment, would be for MFA to approve our, um, new ordinance. And we would begin able to process affordable housing grants at a much swiftly, uh, matter. And would also allow us to expedite any, uh, funding we should receive from the governor's office as well. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director. Uh, we'll have Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Barb Boa.
Yeah, thank you. I would just, I will, when I want to, um, make a motion to, um, approve.
Second, second from Commissioner Benson. So we're on discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you. And, um, yeah, just thank you for bringing this. I think this is, um, a piece to the larger puzzle that can help us just move things that we need to, um, get out, get those funding dollars out the door and into the community where they can be best served and into our own programs and serving the, um, some of the most vulnerable populations. So thank you for everyone's work on this. I know this has been a huge endeavor. Um, and just want to send out appreciations and encourage everybody to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioners, any other discussion here? Uh, from my understanding of this, I, I think this is a very smart move, allowing us to just operate in a more streamlined manner. And, uh, similar to the amendment that we'll hear in a few minutes on procurement ordinance, it means it's just another way for us to, uh, do business in a, in a better way. So, uh, really support this. With that, I'll go ahead and close the floor and, uh, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes on a 5-0 vote. And then our final economic devol, development item in this section, we have the introduction of ordinance for the Family Promise Affordable Housing Grant Application, sponsored by Madam Vice Chair Barboa and presented by Director Gonzalez.
Oh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a, the ordinance that we were just talking about that we no longer have to do. So this is the ordinance for Family Promise, which the commission had already approved, $500,000 of going to this, uh, nonprofit for the affordable housing that they do, uh, provide to the community. They went through, again, the qualified application process, which staff had approved, our Economic Development Review Committee had approved, as well as the, uh, commission as well. Once again, this is for $500,000 to be used for, um, their, um, a complex to help out, um, families that are in need. There, this location will be at 314 and 316 Tennessee. And, uh, the $500,000 is just one portion of their capital stack to be able to purchase the, uh, a building. And, um, so what's being approved again is the initial introduction of this ordinance and then will be brought back for final approval. At the last meeting, we did note that this needed more, um, Housing New Mexico to approve this project. And we have received that approval shortly before this meeting. So the next step will be to just do the ordinance fees and then we can facilitate payment to the organization.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder, we did already pass this as, um, Director Marcos has, um, shared. Family Promise is that, um, they're faith, uh, of co, a coalition or combination of, uh, faith providers, churches that, um, actually run operations. So this is a small, and we've already passed it. I encourage others. I move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of approval, signal in the affirmative?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes on a 5-0 vote. Congratulations, Madam Vice Chair. I know you've been working on that for, for a while. All right, uh, last in our ordinances this evening, we have our procurement and business services amendment to the county procurement ordinance. And, uh, before we get into the presentation, we will proceed with a public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
We have no speakers signed up.
Thank you very much, Javier. And so, uh, we will go ahead and move forward with, uh, the presentation of the motion of the ordinance.
Good evening, Chair Levis, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission. My name is Annie Baca. I'm the Director of Procurement and Business Services. The item that I am bringing before you today is for final adoption consideration, the amendments to the Bernabeu County Ordinance, Procurement Ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 1, Section 2, 358 definitions, Section 2, 361 exemptions from the procurement ordinance, Section 2, 364 requests for qualifications, Section 2, 368 small purchases, and Section 2, 378 contracts. The procurement ordinance was adopted in 2018 and it was created to, it was created to ensure equitable treatment in public procurement, maximizing the value of our public funds and to promote both transparency and accountability. The proposed ordinance amendments were introduced and approved for publication at the June 10th, 2025 administrative meeting and was published in the Albuquerque Journal on Sunday, June 15th, 2025, and on our county webs, website for the requisite 30 days. No comments were received on the proposed changes to the ordinance. During the publication period, procurement conducted working meetings with the county manager's office and the county legal department to develop a transparent process for the use of district directive funding, which will be finalized by the end of August, 2025. Procurement is also collaborating with the Behavioral Health Division to develop an internal process in preparation of the upcoming ordinance changes, if passed, which will be finalized by the end of September, 2025. The proposed amendments and goals of the procurement ordinance are as follows. Section 2, 358 definitions, we are refining our RFQ definitions so we are consistent with all definitions within the ordinance to promote a uniform interpretation of terms. Section 2, 361 exemptions, we are proposing to clarify and expand five exemptions from the ordinance to better serve departments that need flexibility, such as legal, real estate, behavioral health, animal control, youth services center, metropolitan detention center, the county manager and county commission office. We are st, while still maintaining oversight, transparency and documentation. Section 2, 364 requests for qualifications. We are streamlining our process for handling requests for qualifications to better focus on engaging with the most qualified vendors who are interested in doing business with the county. As part of this improvement, we are updating this section to provide the flexibility to award contracts through either a one-step or two-step process, depending on what the chief procurement officer determines to be the most advantageous to the county. Section 2, 368 small purchases, we are also simplifying the small purchase process by increasing the best obtainable threshold for construction from 20,000 to 100,000. This allows us to move more quickly on mid-range construction and other small projects that will align with current market conditions. Section 2, 378 contact, contract duration. Lastly, we are extending the allowable duration of professional service contracts from the current's limit of six years to eight years. This flexibility will help us align with long-term planning and vendor relationships. These changes are about building a smarter, more responsive and more capable government. Our goal is to reduce administrative barriers and speed up procurement timelines while maintaining fairness and recognizing the unique needs of county departments. These amendments will position Bernabeu County to act more strategically, invest more wisely and serve our residents more effectively. I want to thank you for allowing me to present today and I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baca. And, uh, I just want to start off by saying that, that I really appreciate how transparent you all have been in educating us on this, what you just did, educating the public, what you also did at the last meeting. You know, uh, didn't get any public comment, but I think that may be in part because, you know, we've been very active in educating on what this is for and what this will do. And I guess the last time, I think this is just a very smart change. Um, and the only other comment that I, well, actually I had two, two, one comment and one question. The comment being that, uh, we recently prevailed in a lawsuit that dealt with the county's home rule authority. And I think it's important to note that the county's home rule authority is also directly related to our ability to have our own procurement ordinance. Municipalities may have their own procurement ordinance because of their home rule authority.
Right.
But in the state of New Mexico, basically all counties are restricted to the state procurement code, uh, other than us. And so we've taken full advantage of that and, and are continuing to refine that. And so great work to the team here and to the leaders that came before us, um, that sat on this commission and, and in your seats that, that led that charge, uh, as well as Mr. Dan Weeks, who, who was our lobbyist at the time and still is in working on that. So, uh, wanted to recognize the importance of that. And then the last thing was my question about DDF. And you mentioned, uh, coming forward with a new process or new guidelines on that. You don't have to brief us right here, right now, but I assume we'll all. don't have to brief us right here, right now, but I assume we'll all be briefed on sort of what the changes you're proposing are.
Yes. So the working meetings have included members from county legal, county manager's office in developing and refining administrative instructions and processes, making it more clear. And then today, we actually met with all of your assistants to brief them on what we've been doing the past 30 days, and then what's, what's going to be expected to come. But we will brief you all, as well as your assistants, on the new process changes. And if you have any questions, we will be welcome to those at that time.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, I should have made a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, please.
And a second from the vice chair. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, signal the affirmative. Yes. And seeing none opposed, that passes on a five zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baca. All right, we will move on to our adoption of resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please provide resolution numbers for the following three items, A, B, and C?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 10A is AR 2025-80, 10B is AR 2025-81, and 10C is AR 2025-82.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And so first up this evening will be the second hearing and final adoption, if we move forward, with the defending the U.S. Constitution and Separation of Powers, sponsored by myself and Vice Chair Barboia. And Vice Chair, I'll let you start off if you like.
Thank you. I had something written, but now I can't find it. So I just, I want to thank our constituents that brought forward the idea to have a resolution that supports our federal government in making sure that they're holding to our constitution. So, so thank you to all the community members out there. And she has been such a good model to take action. And it's just the time that we need everybody to take action, be in solidarity, and really hold true to our, our standards. So thank you so much. And yeah, I encourage the, my colleagues to vote for this. I move for passage.
Second. And I'll grab the mic real quick here to say, one of the things that really struck me powerfully about this discussion that we had at our last meeting was actually a statement that I believe the vice chair made about sometimes there are occasions where the only tool that we have in a situation is our voice, right, our ability to speak, to speak out, to speak up, to speak truth to power. And I think that really struck me last time after setting on that and thinking about that over the last month, how unfortunately, I think we have to recognize that this may not necessarily change the, the hearts and minds of the federal administration or the, the congressmen and senators that are letting themselves be run roughshod by one person. But I think that nonetheless doesn't dilute the power of this and our voice, and our voice as a community, and our voice as, as leaders here on the commission to say that here in our community, we value the separation of powers. We value our federal constitution. We value our state constitution. And we value all of the protections and the rights and privileges that those documents and those, those efforts afford to all of us. And so I really appreciated that from, from the last meeting. And I want to note that consulting with our staff, there were a couple of minor changes that were made here, changing an acknowledges to believes and a believes to acknowledge, to reflect some of the comments of Commissioner Frank Baca, that I think were very much made this a better document. So really want to encourage support. And I don't know if anyone else has anything else to offer. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I still don't support, I support the title of this resolution, but not the, the body of the letter itself, since it's extremely partisan in its writing. But since it is going towards encouragement to our delegation, I would also ask them to not just fight for your party and partisanship, but also to fight for the state of New Mexico and bring jobs here and reduce crime and make it safer for children and prevent us from being the worst state in the nation for children's safety. Make it easier to, to raise a family here. Stop our physicians from fleeing the state to other states. If they are listening to this, this praise of, of their work that they're doing, I hope they consider this as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? All right. With that, we'll close the floor. And all those in favor of final passage of Resolution A, signal the affirmative. Yes?
No.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. That passes on a four one vote. And I want to thank our, our community member here tonight and those that came to the last meeting as well. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have item B, the Union Square redevelopment resolution. And this will give some direction to our county manager on redevelopment of the Union Square property. I wanted to just say really quickly, this is sponsored by myself and Commissioner Barbara Baca. And I wanted to speak real quickly to the change that we made to hear this for immediate action. And, you know, this was something that we, we spoke with county manager about, and I think it was very thoughtful. You know, we, I, I don't think we should take that kind of action lightly, right? We, we implemented those rules for a reason, to give the public plenty of time to reflect on what we're doing and give us comments and feedback. And the reason that I, I don't have a problem with moving this more quickly is because really what we're asking is for the county manager to go out to the community and ask for ideas, right, and ask for input with a little bit of direction. But I think that getting that moving quickly, Commissioner Baca and I have been looking at this project since we first started here, more than two years ago now. And so we, I, I think for me, I want to see this move forward. So I'll turn it over to my, to my co-sponsor to introduce this further.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd also like to thank the county manager for pushing this forward. As, as the chair said, you know, this is a property that's in a very opportune location. It's really, it's a surplus property, you could say, but I look at it as a real opportunity property that here in, in our downtown, it's an investment in, in the downtown. And what we're proposing here is asking our community to help us. We're talking about public-private partnership. We're talking about mixed use, all of the needs that we have been talking about. And, and moving it forward in an expedited way, I think is just an investment in the heart of our community and the heart of, of the county. So this is, this is really appropriate to move it forward. And I would also say that we have our colleagues on the city council that also are very much in favor. And so we hope that this will, will truly be a, a beautiful development in the future. So thank you. Urge your support.
Through the chair.
Madam County Manager.
Thank you. I, I am very, very excited about moving forward on this. And just a couple of things I want to make sure I affirm in the record, because this is the first time we're doing something in this particular manner. One is that we want to make sure that we are, before we reach out to the development community, we're going to look at best procurement methods, most likely looking at opportunities for a comprehensive redevelopment of the site. And I just wanted to affirm that with the, the makers of the resolution. And then the second is that from a procurement method perspective, we're, we're going to get input about the best procurement method and including looking at everything from more specific RFPs to considering an RFQ to get us started so that we can start to get, get some excitement out there about being able to partner with Bernalillo County. And I want to just affirm that as well. With, thank you. And then what we understand the direction of the resolution is to make sure that we're, we're going out, coming back with a recommendation, but giving the recommendations in priority order based on what kind of input we get. I think that's incredibly important, both to sunshine it for the public, but also to give all of you the options to consider how you would like to proceed. So, and I, that was in the resolution. I just wanted to say out loud that that's the case. And then just for, for the record, I wanted to just make sure that we were clear about the level of background that's already been conducted, which we think allows us to take this step into the future. And that is that facilities and economic development have already conducted a phase one environmental study with a phase two environmental study that is currently in progress. So that's something we can share with the development community who's looking at working with us. A housing study is in its final stages, and this is a high-level analysis of what might be possible for mixed-use housing using the existing building that's there and on, on the same, and on that same footprint, being able to do an additional development. So again, we want to create an environment where the, the documentation and the information we can give to the private sector allows them to come back with their best thinking about both how to have a financially sustainable site, but making sure that we meet the goals that you have, which is really focused both on affordable housing and revitalization of any communities that we're investing in. And then finally, I just wanted to acknowledge that with these studies includes an acoustic study for noise control because of its proximity to the rail runner, which actually is part of the reason it's such a great development site. But it will also be, you know, an active space. And so looking at that activity, engineering assessments on the current structure so that we can determine whether or not we can, we can redevelop the existing building out there. And then there, there's a really exciting trail project that I know there's a lot of enthusiasm from many of you that will be going through this site. So we want to make sure that any development really integrates beautifully with those opportunities to activate the street. So if, if all of that is, is comfortable for our, the co-authors of this, I just want to say we are really enthusiastic and ready to go.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. And I, I just want to emphasize that for me, one of the things that I took home from some of my conversations with developers in the area, NAOP, with other folks that have, you know, interest in, in seeing a revitalized downtown, is the importance of trying to incent an anchor, right? And housing is, is always going to be an anchor, but it's a little anchor, right? And so one of the things that, that was really explained to me is that to have a really successful, vibrant downtown, you need people down there 180 nights a year, right? Every other night, roughly. It's going to break down differently, of course. And so, of course, one option that many communities often use is a, you know, a sports venue or a concert venue or something like that. I don't think this site is, it's just not the footprint or anything like that for that. But there are other venues that I believe we have the potential for there, particularly given its location at the corner of the railroad tracks in Central, right? Literally a historic place, a lot of history there, a lot, a lot that we can talk about there. I just think that we ought not give up this opportunity to try and find a vision for a really exciting and innovative anchor in addition to housing, so that we can not only tackle our affordable housing crisis, but also try to help our partners at the city and all the residents in the city and county benefit from a more vibrant and bustling downtown. And I think we have at least the opportunity for that. Doesn't mean that it's going to happen. And so I'm really excited about this. I'm excited you're excited about it. And, and I know your team, Director Gonzalez, and so many others on the, on the housing front are really looking at this. And so I think that we've got a great opportunity here to, to do something good with this. And so I appreciate my co-sponsor and appreciate you working with us on this.
And just one point that you raised that I, I just want to reaffirm is that, that the opportunity in particular with the rail, I mean, I'm sorry, with the, the trail as well, means that we will obviously have communication with, you know, with the city of Albuquerque. And to your really important point is that it, you both have the opportunity to have some big anchor opportunities throughout downtown. And in between that, you need to make sure there's not missing teeth. And in some respects, filling in the missing, those gaps are almost as important as the, the anchors, because it encourages more and more activity. And part of the reason I'm also excited about this, just to say, is that the opportunity to have mixed use where you have both potentially market rate and affordable housing mixed in means that it gives us an opportunity to attract lots of different kinds of partners as well. So I say all of that only to make the point that, you know, downtowns across the globe struggle with being all that they can be. And I do think the point that you raised about making sure that we're partnering, I think, with the city to make sure that we're, we're part of that plan is going to be incredibly important. And at the same time, making sure that we're moving, because the one thing I will say is that I think the better, the more activity there is, the bigger a pipeline we're going to have for competition for these types of activities. If we don't get that momentum going, we're going to, you know, we're going to be meeting on these beautiful ideas. Por vida, right? And we don't want to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca?
Lastly, I'll just say that we have been talking quite a lot about revitalizing our communities as we are building more affordable housing. And this is an example of that for the future. And we hope that we can really bring in the private sector, perhaps state, you know. But this is a real community revitalization opportunity. And all of these, these ideas that, that we hear the chair talking about and the county manager are real potential for, for this site. So it's, it's a, Burnco builds communities. We're kind of toying with some sort of a tagline that we really are building something here, including that whole mixed use idea. So.
Just to let you know, Tio, Tio is working on your logo right now as we speak. So I, I'd make a motion for approval.
I'll second. Commissioners, any further discussion or questions? Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Barbara Baca for bringing this forward. I actually just love this building so much. So I, both gives me a little bit of fright, and I'm excited about the opportunity. But, but I think it's a beautiful building. So, but it sounds like, I, I didn't quite understand, is this like a study to find out what we do with the property to meet its best, its best economic and housing?
Maybe you'd like, yes, may I? So part of the reason we were doing the initial studies was to determine the viability of the reuse of the building that's on the site, looking at the entire footprint to see how much housing, how much retail could actually go on the site. And how do you do that with the right amount of circulation and safe ingress and egress, particularly because you have that beautiful trail that's going to be on one side of the building. So one of the things that we have to take a look at is the cost of the redevelopment of the building that's there. And one of the things that we'll come back to are going to be the ideas, we think, from good, strong development partners about their recommendations on how to proceed. Now, one of the studies that's already, already been, that's under, that's been undertaken now that looks at those other areas I talked about, like noise and other things like that, we can certainly make available to the entire commission. So you have a chance to look at them. Because since this is a little bit new for us, I think it's really important that all of us all along the way have all of the same information. I think we would come back to you if we saw something that was so spectacular that remove that building, we'd, we'd want to show that option to you too. But right now, we're, we're presuming that we're going to redevelop the building that we own that's there already and use the rest of the footprint for more housing, the circulation I talked about, and mixed use that will enliven those streets and keep them active and safe.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thanks, Chair. And so I guess my second, well, I, when I hear that, then I think of parking also. But, but the, so if and when, we're hoping this, this actually says more study, or when this comes back with some recommendations?
It'll come back with recommendations from, we hope, for-profit and/or nonprofit partners that want to co-develop the site with us.
And then code, thank you, that helps a little bit with, and the code development means that we would still maintain ownership of the property.
That is my objective.
Okay. That's what I would think I was mostly trying to get at. Thank you very much.
And, yes, Commissioner Frank Baca, go ahead.
You know, I just listened to this, and I, I think it's also exciting opportunity. I just will think of, I won't mention any specific projects, but in the past that I've watched from afar, I just would think that we need to be, watch the meter very closely because what I gather is we're already spending a lot of money. And, you know, dealing with old buildings is, you know, normally very expensive proposition. You start getting to phase two, phase three environmental studies, you know, I mean, it's a great opportunity, but, you know, we have to look at obviously the, the big picture costs of this. And you end up spending so much money upfront in your studies. And then, you know, the know, the viability of it. And so we're footing the bill for that, for the benefit of somebody else taking it and running for it. So I'm just saying that we just need to monitor that very closely and keep close watch. And I'd like to see those numbers as we go through what we're paying in terms of the studies I've done so far and the studies that are planned, as will the potential bidders. And then the only other comment I have is that I'm assuming that this is going to be, you know, the information about this project is going to be widespread, so lots of different people will have the opportunity to think about it and consider that. And in terms of the concept, I think it's a great idea, because, yeah, there are a lot of people out there that see things that in a different way, you know, from private sector and nonprofits, that I'm sure they would have some very interesting and creative ideas. So, yeah, I'm excited about it, I think it's great, but we need to keep a close watch on the dollars that we spend as well.
Commissioner Buck, I would just say 100% agree with you, and my, you know, my thinking on this, and, you know, there's, I can tell there's already kind of going to be some disagreement on that whole, do you prioritize historic versus efficiency? And I think that's why you open this up to the development community and say, give us your ideas, give us your thoughts, right? And I, you know, obviously, you want to try to preserve that facade and that facility, but I think it's the private development community that's really going to come in and say, look, this is how it pencils or it doesn't. And then that's where, as a commissioner, we're going to have to step in and make a decision of, okay, do we want to subsidize maybe the preservation of this building, you know, but we're going to have to subsidize it versus, you know, a private developer might do this if they were just given carte blanche. And so I think that's a question we'll be able to answer, hopefully, if this goes well, as the County Manager said, kind of giving them the ability to give us their best shot. So I totally agree with you, though, it can get out of control fast if we're not careful.
And Chair, through the Chair, I will make sure that we get you all of the studies along with the costs that have already been spent. I will just acknowledge that that is a property we own now, we had staff in it, and we don't anymore. And one of the things that we may want to do in the interim is utilize the building for county programming, just to keep that place alive and safe and all of that. So we'll be looking at a lot of different pathways to be efficient and effective with the county's resources, but we'll make sure you get the studies.
Vice Chair Barboi, did you, oh, okay, Commissioner Mitz, okay. I think with that, we'll close the floor. Do we make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we get the motion. Second, all those in favor of approval, signaling the affirmative? Yes?
Aye.
All right, looks like that passes on a 5-0 vote, and that'll take us to Item C. This was also an immediate action item, suspension of the rules due to the timeline on this because of the end of the fiscal year and the July recess. So with that, we've got County Director Jackie Sanchez to present.
Hello, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Stephanie Sanchez, I'm the Deputy Director of Accounting and Budget, and as you mentioned, we're asking for a suspension of the rules because of the timing of this submittal, and it's to approve the preliminary fourth quarter report for submittal to DFA, the Department of Finance and Administration. So state statute requires the county to present to DFA quarterly reports, and DFA itself requires us to get the fourth quarter approved by the local body, and that's what we're coming for the approval today. So just to note, this is a preliminary report, it is unaudited, the final, I guess the final fiscal year financials will be submitted to the Office of the State Auditor on or before December 1st. Once we get approval from them, it will come to the Board for approval. And attached to the agenda is the financial analysis form as well as the final recap, and that's what is submitted to DFA. And I stand for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion from the Vice Chair, Secretary from the Chair. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll close the floor. All those in favor of adoption, signaling affirmative, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And it looks like passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 11 is introduction of resolutions. All resolutions require two hearings before final approval, except in cases of special exemption, like those we just did. The first hearing will serve as the resolution's introduction. The public is encouraged to review the introduced resolutions and sign up to ask questions or provide public comments in the interim. The following items will be returned at a subsequent meeting for final adoption. And first, we have Item C, the BCHD Administrative Plan Updates Presented by Director Coburn.
Good evening, Chair Levis, members of the Commission, Madam Culver, Housing Director. The item before you this evening is the updates to our administrative plan. Presenting the item today is Liliana Mendoza, who is our Housing Program Supervisor. This is her first time presenting, so.
Nice, welcome.
Liliana.
Good evening, Chair Levis and members of the Commission. My name is Liliana Mendoza, and I am the Housing Program Supervisor with Burnley County Housing Department. I am here today representing the Housing Department to request Board approval for the amendments to our administrative plan for all HUD housing and urban development regulated programs. The administrative plan is a guidebook that outlines the policies and procedures for administering all federally funded HCV housing choice voucher programs, and is a guide for everything from our waiting list, eligibility, guidance for qualified families searching for homes, and processing interim and annual re-examinations. Throughout the year, the Housing Department tracks changes that are set by HUD, as well as internal policy changes that can be clarified or amended to better align with regulation. These changes ensure we operate in compliance with HUD regulation and provide a clear guidance to both our staff and program participants. We are proposing these changes to implement HUD's transition, HOPMA Housing Opportunity through Modernization Act. HOPMA changes how HUD administers and oversees housing programs with specific focus on reporting aspects of HCV programs. We are adopting and spire the national standards for the physical inspection of real estate to replace our prior HQS Housing Quality Standards model to streamline inspections while ensuring residents live in safe homes. The current federal system that is used to track and monitor data, IMS PIC, was to be replaced by HUD to HIP, Housing Information Portal, but has been since, been delayed by HUD. PHA's public housing agencies will continue using the existing IMS PIC system. We've revised some of our agency's PHA policies to provide clearer understanding and guidance to our staff and program participants. These updates aim to reduce confusion and ensure everyone understands their rights and responsibilities. And lastly, in related news, we wanted to touch on the proposed federal administrative changes regarding term limits to HCV vouchers. Term limits on housing vouchers would restrict the length of time a household can receive assistance. These limits often tie to a specific timeframe of work requirements aimed to encourage self-sufficiency, but can also create challenges for families, especially those facing difficult economic circumstances. We are preparing for the possibility of term-limiting vouchers for non-elderly and working families. We estimate that as many as 96 voucher families could be at risk of being displaced due to these changes. However, recent state bill increases in funding from HUD for HUD programs from fiscal year 2026 state that basically these changes do not include in any policy changes at this time. It should be noted that a reconciliation between two proposed budgets are necessary by October 1st. In summary, we respectfully request your approval of these changes, which will allow us to continue providing safe, affordable housing for those in need in our community. These administrative plan changes are essential for our PHA to stay compliant with HUD regulation to provide clear guidance to our staff and program participants. Thank you for your time, and we stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Barboi?
Well, I have some.
Go ahead, questions?
Sorry, I know, we should do motions first. I guess, thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Sanchez. For the federal changes, I think on that last slide that we're showing, are you saying that those are things we were, because it looks like those policies, it is not in the most recent passed bill to make those work requirement or voucher time limit changes? That's what this is saying, right? I just want to make sure I understand it.
So Chair Levis, Vice Chair Barboi, yes, so what we have heard is the proposal for these term limits. What was in the Senate bill that was just proposed for the budget, there's no mention of these, and there's actually an increase in funding for HUD. So between the two bills that we've seen, there's going to have to be some kind of reconciliation between those about what is going to happen. So we're still planning and keeping an eye out for the possibility of term limits, but at this point, we're not sure where, which direction it's going to go.
And you're talking about at the federal level, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And so this isn't about the big, beautiful bill, this is about a different proposed bill? Okay, so for my clarity, as far as we understand and our legal team understands, there's not, in the big, beautiful bill, there is not voucher time limits or work requirements for housing right now in that bill?
Chair Levis, Vice Chair Barboi, exactly.
Awesome, well, that's good, that's one reason it can be maybe called beautiful. So that is a good thing. And, and, okay, and so, but we're anticipating with new, probably post-midterms, that you've heard, you're saying you've seen other proposed language in other proposed bills? Okay, thank you, I wasn't, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So as of now, we're good go on our, what we currently have and possibly even have access to increased funding that might be able to provide more support?
Vice Chair Barboi, as far as we are right now, it is business as usual, there are no proposed cuts. Any changes that could come wouldn't be until after FY '26 at this point what we're seeing.
County Manager.
So, two things that I just want to make sure we're really clear about, one, well, maybe three. One is, I think the staff did a really good job of just saying that this is an annual report, these are changes that we have to adopt in order to be able to get the resources that they talked about, and they're pretty minor. We have been following, and I know under Amanda's leadership, just really tracking what's happening at a federal level. Your staff is also working to create a strategy that includes a red-blue strategy for medium to small counties, to make sure we're speaking with one voice as these issues continue to come up. Because one thing that we've seen is, we've seen changes happen in the form of bills, we've seen changes happen in the form of executive orders, and we've seen changes happening from a rulemaking perspective in many, many departments across the federal government. So you're, today, and I think you were asking me this too, like, are you sure? And I think the answer to this is, we're sure-ish, and we're confident that there is more money coming, and these are the changes we're seeing right now, but we're working really, really hard to be part of the federal, you know, really a national discussion about what happens with HUD, what kinds of resources should be available for housing, what kinds of rule changes need to be made available. And the one thing I will say is that in the past, I think we have focused very, very much on revenue, you know, like, can we get money for this or that? And I'm as interested in rules as we are in resources, because they have such a significant impact on how quickly we can build, if we can build, how vouchers go out, who can get a voucher. So we're turning our attention to really be able to be present on all fronts, instead of maybe just one or two.
Thank you so much, thanks for that clarity, and thanks again for your presentation.
Did you want to make a motion?
Oh, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you.
And I was just going to editorialize briefly on what you were bringing up, and, you know, the issues we're facing, of course, through the agencies and the regulatory state are one thing, but, you know, the Speaker of the House and the President said that they wanted to do one or two more reconciliation bills and potentially go after some of these other priorities. So I don't know how realistic that is, but I think with these folks, you got to kind of take them for their word, because so far, we, you know, that hasn't gone very well. So I think we need to be prepared for that, and I'm really grateful that staff is thinking about that. And I think that the Senate bill you're referring to is the one that was just passed for the couple of different agencies and appropriations bill, but that also has to be reconciled with the House budget and has to be signed into law, and I think this is a Congress that's been operating on a continuing resolution for a decade now or something like that, so I don't know if that's true, but for a long time. They are not good at passing budgets. So we'll see, I'm not super hopeful we're going to get more money. And then the one thing I did have was a question for you, because it seemed like one of the changes here was regarding inspections of properties that people do to keep their voucher, which is, you know, really working with the landlord and the property owner. And I'm just wondering, do you anticipate any changes going forward that property owners would or should expect, or is it really just an internal change?
Chair Levis, we've been meeting regularly with our landlords about these changes, so they're not, they're not huge changes, it's what fails on an inspection, now the timeline has shifted a little bit. So something is either a 24-hour fix or a 30-day fix. So with HQS standards, still would have been a fail, but the timeline changed. So it's giving landlords a little bit more time to make these changes, or make these repairs.
Unless it's one of those urgent 24-hour things.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I'm just always interested in that, because that's a, there's a push-pull there, right, into, you know, maintaining a safe environment, but also incenting landlords to work with us and take vouchers, and if they perceive that it's too much of a hassle, then you run into that situation where they won't accept it.
Chair Levis, we've been working with our landlords for almost two years now to prepare them for these changes. So we've done several trainings with them, we brought in a national trainer last April and invited all of our landlords to come in and take a training with them on what these Inspire changes will look like. Every month, our landlords are communicated with about the changes, what's coming up, how quickly we're rolling out. We officially go live October 1. Our landlords are being made aware on a regular basis, hey, don't forget Inspire's coming. We are meeting August 14th? August 13th, with our landlords for another push, another kind of update of what the changes look like, what's going on. So we've made a really, really diligent effort to engage with our landlords and let them know what's going on for almost two years now.
That's great, thank you. Commissioners, any further thoughts, discussion? All right, we'll close the floor. All those in favor signaling affirmative? Yes?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes on 5-0 for its first hearing. Thank you. All right, next up, we have, that's all of our resolutions for the evening, takes us on to approvals. We have the Human Resources Department with the collective bargaining agreement for the Burnley County Court Deputies Association, and we have Mr. Don Hill here to present.
Good evening, Chair Levis, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. I am Senior Manager for Labor and Employee Relations, Don Hill, and I'm seeking Commission approval of the negotiated changes to the collective bargaining agreement for the Burnley County Court Deputies Association. Negotiations between the county and the court deputies commenced on April 4th of this year, and after six sessions, we reached a tentative agreement on July, pardon me, on June 20th. On July 9th, Union Membership ratified the contract changes, and the new contract will go into effect with your approval the first full pay period after we receive that approval. This will be a three-year agreement, we've been trying to push for longer agreements, and we did, most of our agreements are two years, but we did get this to be a three-year agreement with the interim two years, just for reopeners for economics and one other article. Our shared goal in these negotiations was to improve deputy retention and to fill vacancies. We currently have 28 positions at the courts, but 13 of those are vacant. To that end, and within the budget parameters set by the commission, the parties agreed to a new tiered system of pay based on law enforcement experience. This entails an 8.5% increase in pay for those with less than five years of law enforcement experience, all the way to a 19.7% increase for those with at least 15 years of LE experience. In addition to the pay increases, the parties agreed to changes in Article 26, the drug and alcohol testing, to better align with the new county law. drug and alcohol testing, to better align with the new countywide policy. And also, there were some minor changes to the grievance process, sick leave conversion, and the sheriff's ability to fill vacancies. I'd like to thank the court deputies, negotiating team members. I don't believe we have any here. And that would be Local President Michael Alexander, Court Deputy Raymond Casaldek, and outside counsel Justin Leskey. I'd like to thank them for their collaboration and professionalism in reaching this agreement. I'd also like to thank Madam County Manager for her support and recognize the members of the management negotiating team, DCMs Shirley Reagan and Greg Perez, along with HR Director Bernadette Perez, Under Sheriff Erin Williamson, and outside counsel Dana Holcomb, with whom I served as co-lead negotiator. Not seeing any of the union presence, I stand for any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Second from the Vice Chair. Commissioners, any questions or discussion? I just want to thank the, the manager and your team in Human Resources. I, I think you all clearly heard us loud and clear during the budget process when we brought this issue up. This was brought to us by Court Deputies Association, but also through looking at overtime and, and all those issues. And so, you know, very clearly, I think loud and clear, we are investing in our court security through this action that we will take right here, making some pretty significant investments in those professionals that protect our courthouse. So thank you for doing that and following through. Seeing no further discussion, we'll close the floor, and all those in favor signaling affirmative?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, sir.
All right, our last item this evening, item B of county, the internal audit plan for 2026, years ending in 2026 and 2027. Director Jackie Sanchez.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez, Director of Accounting and Budget. This evening is Burnaleo County's contracted internal auditors, REDW. We have Ms. Jessica Bundy, Principal Audit and Assurance, and Ms. Caitlin Gutierrez, Internal Audit Senior Manager. I will turn it over to them shortly. This is a motion to approve the internal audit plan years ending June 30th, 2026 and To touch on the background, Burnaleo County Commission and County Manager have oversight responsibility to ensure that the actions of public officials and employees of the county are carried out in the most responsible manner possible. To accomplish this, the Board established an independent audit committee in accordance with Burnaleo County Code, Chapter 2, Article 4, Section 2-307. And the county contracted with REDW LLC certified public accountants to provide internal audit services. The Board approved a four-year contract for internal audit services on May 11th, 2021, with an option to extend the term for two additional years, which was exercised and approved by the County Manager on April 15th, 2025. To plan the nature, scope, and extent of the internal audit services for year recommendations, are solicitant concerning the audit plan from County Commission, County Manager, Deputy County Managers, the County Attorney, elected officials, department directors, and various other county personnel. The Burnaleo County Code, Chapter 2, Article 4, Section 2-311, requires periodic submission of an audit plan to the Audit Committee for review, revision, and approval after the plan is submitted to the Board for final approval. On July 21st, 2025, the Audit Committee reviewed and unanimously approved the attached internal audit plan for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026 and 2027. If approved by the Board, REDW will implement this plan. The Audit Plan summarizes planning and internal audit risk assessment procedures and describes planned allocation of internal audit resources for the timeline. As additional information is obtained throughout the year, REDW will reevaluate the risk areas and will adjust the plan as considered necessary upon approval of the Audit Committee. Attachments to the agenda to support the approval of the internal audit includes the internal audit plan for June 30th, 2026 and 2027, as well as the FAF, which is the Financial Analysis Form. I will now turn it over to REDW to present or to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Good evening. Jackie, you did a great job summarizing the process. A couple of things that I wanted to touch on with the process. So like Jackie mentioned, we start with doing various interviews, and with that, we also look to create a balanced plan. So we want to make sure that we're focusing on the highest-risk areas that are being brought up through our interviews, but also maintaining an ongoing process where we're rotating areas through every, you know, two to three years. And so that's kind of how we work to develop our plan. So we'll work through the various county departments, and we conduct our interviews. We read other information, and we kind of look at where we've been. And from that information, we develop the two-year audit plan. The first-year plan for 2026 is the one we really focus on, and then 2027 is kind of like a placeholder. This is where we think we're going to go. But of course, every year, we go back and we update that plan. So next year, at the start of the year, we would go and redo our interviews, kind of look at where we've been, what new information we have, and we reassess based on that information. With that, the other thing I wanted to point out before I turn it over to Kate to explain the 2026 audit plan is that at the start of every internal audit, we do a full risk assessment. So we conduct a process where we identify what level of testing and what areas are going to be scoped in. And so there is always that ongoing process that we work through at the start of every audit to kind of refine our scope that we have listed here.
I feel very tall. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. So what I want to go ahead and do is just briefly go over the areas that we're going to focus on for fiscal '26. You are welcome to interrupt me with any questions should you have them. But the first area is going to be the human capital management system, typically what we call Workday. And so here, we're going to kind of take a dual approach, looking at both the benefits administration side and the payroll side, since it is a new system that always brings new processes, new internal controls, and new risks. So we really want to look and make sure that all those things are functioning because it is such a critical system to the county. Next, we're going to go contract oversight and monitoring. This is going to be a neat audit. This is going to look at countywide processes for contract oversight and monitoring, to look for those consistencies, those efficiencies, really making sure there's sound internal controls within each of these areas. Next, we'll go over to real estate. So here, we're going to, this is one we're going to, haven't been to in a while. So we're going to look at just kind of those overall processes, how is real estate acquired, disposed of, those different things, making sure that there's good processes in place there. Next, we'll switch over to emergency communication. Obviously, this is a pretty highly regulated area, so really looking for that compliance with policy and procedure, requests for public safety support or dispatch timely, very critical things for those county services. We'll shift gears back into another, what I call a countywide audit. So this is going to look at countywide user access. As we know, there is a lot of risk in cybersecurity and all the different technology things. So here, we're going to make sure that that user access to the systems at the county are being provisioned timely, that terminated employees are being removed timely, things like that, to really make sure that people that shouldn't have access to systems don't. We'll then switch over to emergency management, looking at the emergency planning and follow-up processes, making sure that they're in place and following applicable processes. We'll switch over to fixed assets after that. Again, we're going to look here very similarly to purchasing, tracking, safeguarding of fixed assets and disposals. We're also going to take a peek at the processes for sensitive non-capital assets and lease accruals. So that should be fun. The next one is going to be the Treasurer's Office. This is an annual internal audit that we do per their policy. So this is a pretty standard audit. We go in and just verify compliance with the investment policy. We'll then switch over to the opioid settlement funds, looking at those funding allocations to ensure compliance with strategic goals, and then making sure those mechanisms are in place to monitor those funding outcomes. And then we'll close out the year in terms of the department-specific internal audits with the Office of Senior and Social Services. What you'll see after that is what we do every single year. So we'll do the risk assessment and planning for the fiscal '27 to develop the '27-'28 plan. We'll do our internal audit follow-up, which is where we go back on all the outstanding observations, get the current status updates from management, and determine if those observations can be resolved or remain unresolved for the next year. And then we leave some time for project management and also any audits that may pop up during the year that need some attention. So with that, I will open for questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners? Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Hi, thank you all so much for the great information and presentation. And this, when you, because this, the, I know before, when we, when y'all have talked to me, you've been like, you can talk to us any time of year. It's not just this one time when we call you and call us. But when you name out these different sort of, I thank you for sharing the focus on where you're going and how you're sort of covering all the bases. That's just happening year-round, and then we get sort of a compilation of things in the big audit. Or?
So after we go and we complete an internal audit, we present it to the Audit Committee, and then we're usually doing that in batches. So we actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with the Audit Committee. We'll be presenting two reports, and after the Audit Committee approves those reports, then they'll get distributed to you all.
Wonderful.
And so that happens ongoing throughout the year. I think we usually meet four, four, five times, usually quarterly with the Audit Committee.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. And thank you so, I just want to thank you for this. I think this is one of the most important functions of government. I know y'all are behind the scenes, right? But the more we're continually evaluating, auditing, and making sure that we're doing best practices, so I just really appreciate your work behind the scenes. So important. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Oh, yes. I move to approve.
Okay. I'll second. Any other Commissioners discussion? No? Okay. I, let me think here. I had a question for you about the follow-up, and this is really the, the only feedback, frankly, that I, that I gave about the, the audit process. And frankly, I don't necessarily think it's anything to do with you all, but I think you had just started, actually, when, when you all, sorry, County Manager had just started, when you all just gave us the sort of follow-up report. That was the first one that I had seen as a Commissioner, showing kind of all the open issues. And I just think it's really important that we follow up on all this great work that you all do, because there's a lot of recommendations in there. I can see where some of this stuff is probably a real management challenge sometimes, some of the things that you're talking about. Some of the things are much more simple, but like, one of the ones you just mentioned on access, I remember reading that one a couple of years ago. You guys did the same kind of thing, because I remember stuff about employees still having access when they were, you know, dismissed or retired or whatever to those systems. So, I mean, and obviously something you want to check again, but just, just a note for the, the management team, you know, I think it's really important that we implement the work you do and not just have it as good, light reading.
Light reading. If I could, just a couple of things that I'll acknowledge. One is that I do want to just highlight how incredibly skilled and knowledgeable our Audit Committee is. If you have not had a chance to go to one of these meetings, they ask very good questions, both of staff and of our auditors. The second is that post-COVID or during COVID, these meetings were almost all held online. We now are doing them all in person, and part of the reason for that is I want people to understand that we're taking very seriously not just the audit, but the kind of feedback they give, and whether or not something long-term stays a finding, or whether or not it's, can be resolved right in that moment. And then the third thing I'll say is that as part of the evaluation of the senior staff, we will be looking at all open audit findings. Now, some of them, I mean, I've read through them, some of them I think are really very important that we have to resolve. Others, I, I wasn't as, you know, I wasn't as concerned about them, but I think the custom and practice of, of engaging with our, our internal auditors, the same way we do with our external auditors, which is really helping us get much, much better at providing the services that we provide, and taking that seriously enough that that will be part of the evaluation of the staff, and it'll be something that I report on to you as part of my evaluation as well. I know we haven't had one yet, but that's on my list of, of, of issues to ask you to evaluate me and me to evaluate the team, and the team to work with their staffs to really make key improvements. The last thing I'm going to say is that I'm, I'm interested very much in getting through a whole cycle of the audit process, in part because I'm trying to, you know, ascertain the, the processes we're currently using, even, even with our partner organization here, to make sure that we're using these, you know, we spend a lot on audits, both the internal and external audit, and making sure that we're auditing the things we need to be auditing, that the, the method in which an issue gets raised, the staff gets engaged, it gets resolved, is one that's much more clear and easier for you all to follow the bouncing ball, especially on something that you care deeply about.
Great. I love it that you're, you're already, you've already operationalized it and talking about how you assign accountability throughout the organization so that it flows, and I, I appreciate that. And that's, that's really my main, main concern. And then I just had a question about, because you raised it twice, now the Audit Committee, we've seen a little bit of, I guess you could say dysfunction with our counterparts at the city and their Audit Committee. They hadn't released several reports, and they, I think they fired the auditor or something like that after that. And so, I mean, have we ever had any kinds of issues with, with reports being embargoed by that committee or withheld from, I guess it ultimately flows back to us?
No, no.
Great.
Yeah, no. And also, I would just say, if, if an issue like that came about, I would be alerting you right away. But we have, we have an excellent, excellent Audit Committee. I mean, and, and they enjoy working with our auditors, and the feedback I've gotten from our staff is our staff enjoys working with our auditors. And what that tells me is that people are trying to solve problems and not just staking out territory. Does it happen sometimes? I'm sure it does, and when we see that, I'll intervene as necessary.
That's great. And I think some of that's probably just the tension between the council and the mayor and legislators and executives. So anyway, I think that's great, though, that we're not.
I don't know if there's a better word. Yikes.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll close the floor and move to the vote. All those in favor of approval, signaling the affirmative? Yes?
Aye.
That passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, guys.
All right. And last thing, we've got announcement of our next Commission meetings. Tuesday, August 19th, we have a zoning meeting at 3:30 PM right here in the Kentsanjust Commission Chambers, followed by the Board of Finance meeting at 4:00 PM. And again, on Tuesday, August 19th, right after the Board of Finance, we have our regular administrative meeting at 5:00 PM here in these chambers. And with that, if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.